Good evening. We welcome you here to our city council this meeting, city council meeting this evening. We'll call our meeting to order. And we have present here all of our city council members with the exception of Tom, who is absent tonight. We also have Mr. Isaac sitting in for our city manager, Wayne Pyle. And so with those, we have an opening ceremony traditionally here. And that has fallen to me this time, which I can say that I'm greatly prepared for, but wanted to share a couple of comments. I had the opportunity last fall to visit with and meet with a number of people from around the city. It was fascinating to me as I went to their homes and talked with them at their doors that it mattered not what their political party was, it didn't matter their gender, their culture, their age, or anything else. Their issues were often the same, their neighborhoods. And they looked to those who were elected, and of course, I was trying to convince them to assist me in that process, that they looked to those elected officials to represent their concerns. Now, the great challenge with that in a city of over 130,000 people is that there's more than one opinion. There are always at least two sides, and sometimes more than that to an issue. And yet, they look to us as elected officials to say, you know, do the best you can, and they place great trust in us. For the most part, they say, you know, if I don't like what you're doing, I'll let you know next election day. They usually don't say a whole lot. They are relatively silent group. Tonight, we have here with this fairly large group. This is unusual. Very few people come. We wish there were more involved. But that responsibility of government, a system of government that we have instituted in our country, which is that we elect people to study the issues, to evaluate them, to represent them, and to vote on those issues and determine what happens, not just in the city, but literally on every street in every neighborhood across the city. That is a very significant responsibility. And I am amazed at how well it works. We are blessed here in Utah, I believe, and I use that term in its fullest sense, that we have, in most regards, people elected in office who are sincere, who are striving to do all that they can to make their communities better. Occasionally, there are a lapse or two, as we experienced this last year at the state But as I have watched individuals over many years in all different parties and political persuasions, and in all different elected offices, I believe that we are fortunate in Utah to have many people who really sincerely try. They may not always match our individual beliefs, but that's true even here on the council, which is good. You have a variety of opinions and backgrounds that help to bring different perspectives to issues. And when we have public input, it even expands that. It is a great process. It is a great thing to live in our country. Perhaps I've thought more about this of recent because of the Olympics and the issues of many countries being represented there and some who really struggle, really struggle. And I say, I wouldn't trade their problems for ours, because our problems, we can deal with. We may not deal with them the best way, and we may not get it right the first time, but we certainly are better off than I believe anywhere else in the world. With that, I know it's almost a tradition, but I think I will continue that tradition, even though I've given some comments, of repeating the pledge to our flag, because it is representative of us as a nation, if you advise and join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for participating with us on that. I do not see any Boy Scout groups. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, most individuals who are here are to participate in a discussion on an item we have on the agenda. If that's not true, please indicate, otherwise we'll get to that in just a couple of minutes. Okay. Although I would be remiss, I do have, regardless of why he is here, former mayor Mike Winder. We appreciate you being here, whatever that capacity is. It's always nice to have a former mayor come and look for your comments afterwards. And, oh, yes. We also have with us a state representative. Oh, there he is, Larry Wiley. We appreciate your being here. Thank you for coming. And again, whatever brings you here, we're always happy to have you. Appreciate those. And one who was serving in public office, one who currently serves in public office at the state, and appreciate your work there. Thank you. Then, item number five on our agenda to the minutes. Look to the council for action.
Mayor, I'll move for approval of the February 4th, 2014 regular city council minute meeting. Meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Vincent has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Buehler. We have a motion and a second before us. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We do have a public comment period. If you're here, though, to speak on the item on the agenda for the residential apartment building on Cultural Center Drive, now would not be the time to speak. We'll have that in a few minutes, hold a public hearing on that. Any others here to speak? Okay. And any comments from our assistant city manager?
No, sir.
Any comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll move forward then to the next item. We are here to deal with application number GPZ-7-2013. This is requesting a general plan change, and it deals with the property located at 3234 South Cultural Center Drive. Mr. Isaac, is there any comments you want to make on that?
Just to clarify that there are two ordinances here that the city has filed an application for the council to consider. You're correct, one is the general plan change, and then, of course, there's also another ordinance that would change the zone in that same area from an R-112 to a C-2.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that introduction, we will now open a public hearing regarding this application. And this is the point where we accept the input from the public on this particular item. I believe that there are quite a few of you here to speak. I don't know if all of you are. Just making sure I keep it somewhat accurate. This one is actually a little different in that, just before we begin the public hearing, in that the city is actually the one making this application for the change. So the dynamic here is a little bit different. Normally, if a developer is here, we would give them a chance to speak, and I believe there's something here representing them that will speak. And so we will do that, but we're just going to kind of mix it up a little bit. And how many of you want to speak to this issue? If you'd just raise your hands. Okay. What actually looks like about six or so? That doesn't mean if you change your mind, you can't, you can come up during this comment. So maybe we'll start over here on the left. Yeah, if you want, whichever one of you to come forward. And we would ask that when you come to the microphone, remember that this is a publicly recorded meeting. We would ask you to state your name, even if we know you well. And I believe we have them give their address. Is that my name? Name and address.
Thank you. Larry Wiley, aisle 1450 West, 3300 South. I speak in opposition to the proposed zoning change. And I have several of my neighbors who have volunteered to come and speak to as well, or at least come and support. We met for the planning commission when this came about, when this was proposed, and we spoke in opposition to the planning commission as well. I think there's several points here that I'll bring to light here, and I think a lot of these that you're familiar with, that we did have a kind of a signature... Well, we just had the neighbors get involved, so we did. So we had them sign a petition, and caught that petition was given to the council and also given to the zoning board, I guess it is, board directors or whatever you want to call that. But anyway, we feel strongly that the proposed changes would have a detrimental effect on our community, our neighborhood. And you have to understand that most of us that are here tonight are people who have been born and raised in the neighborhood. We have strong roots, we have deep roots, we have a lot of ownership in that community. But we really feel that it would have a detrimental effect to allow a four-story, 96-unit apartment complex be built right next door to single-family dwellings. The proposed, proposes a zoning change also creates uncertainty with existing properties there. Now, I have yet to find out if, in fact, it enhances our property values or whether it's going to be a detriment. And I think we have an issue with a lot of the folks that want to remodel, want to better themselves, their properties and so forth, but they're a little apprehensive in doing so, only because we don't know if we're feeding a white elephant or whether it's something that's, you know, materialized in the future and pay dividends. I think we've experienced, over the past probably 10, 15 years, some very high-density type housing, or at least high-density housing within our community, and it hasn't really turned out well. So we have concerns with that as well. High-density residential development often comes a burden to neighbors, the city. I'm not saying that, you know, it brings in undesirables, and the people that live there probably are great people. I think all people basically are good people, it's the people that come to see those people that create problems. We have no control over that. We have concerns with that. We had a concern with the development having access to our streets, but we later found out that there was no access onto 33rd South, it was on the Cultural Drive, is where the access would take place. So that was really not a concern at this point in time. We strongly support the current R-112 zoning that's currently there. I think the master plan shows it says being residential. I know there's, there's changes that take place, but we were opposed to any major changes. We don't have a problem with a development such as the senior housing we have just a little bit on our same street, just west of where this is located. That's turned out to be a model community. I mean, we've had no problems at all. In fact, I think some of the folks I've talked to there have concerns about their property as well with development of high-density residential going in into the post area. We support reasonable development that keeps harmony with existing properties. I think, as I explained to the commission, planning commission, that, you know, we have single-family homes in that neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, we have a four-story, 96-unit structure going up next door. I mean, there's no transition there. I think that concerns us, because, you know, we've, all our lives enjoyed open space. We've enjoyed the freedom of surroundings. You know, we still have what we had up until they opened the road. We had deer and wildlife and so forth that visit our backyards. For some of us, it was a beautiful thing, you know. For others, you know, we really had a problem with the vegetation that they liked, you know, my wife's flowers and stuff like that. But I tell you, it's so beautiful to be able to see that in such a, an area, I mean, middle of downtown, basically, West Valley City. You just don't see that kind of stuff. So, you know, we, we, we struggle. We, we, we want that to remain. We feel good about what we've done. In fact, I think we've even extended ourselves to the developer, and I appreciate the developer being here tonight to speak as well, that he took his time to come and meet with the neighborhood, and we had a good discussion. But I think it was almost an impasse. I mean, he was pretty well set in his ways. He wanted to, you know, make a pencil out. He had to have a, a four-story, 96-unit building to make it work. I just, I just tell you, I... It's kind of like bad planning on my part. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, you folks, you've got major investment over there, and we appreciate that. But there again, I think it's, it's very important that when you look at this, that you, when you develop that, you develop it so it's, creates harmony within the community. And that piece of property, as I understand it too, is kind of a, not the best piece of property in the world, but nevertheless, it's property that's next door to us. What you do, 33rd South, you know, on the east side of the Cultural Drive there, you know, you could put whatever you want to. You put high-rise buildings in there, it'd be fine. But just please, you know, we want a transition to where we don't have day and night. We don't want a four-story building going up against a one-story or a two-story residential home. So with that, I think, you know, we appreciate your time and effort, the work that's gone into this. We just think that, we hope that you're considerate of our needs as well. We will be considerate of yours, just be considerate of ours. So with that, I speak in strong opposition to the proposed zoning change and hope that you can help us continue with our way of life over there. Thank you.
One thing I forgot to mention, which I think would be appropriate. The council may not have asked many questions or had much discussion here, but this is an item that we studied last week, and we had a chance to delve into the details of the project. So it's not, we're not interested. It's just that this is now the time for some public input, so we don't mean to...
Okay. Well, I mean, I'll be more than happy to answer questions. That's, that's not a problem I even have.
Yeah. I just hadn't mentioned that, because a lot of people here and those listening in may not be aware that we have studied this issue in depth already.
Okay.
Okay, with that, then we'll go to someone to speak in favor of this proposal.
Could we go last and hear all the other comments for Mr. Mayor?
I'll turn to the council on that. Tradition has it that you alternate plus and minus, favor and against, but what does the council think? Mr. Vincent, Councilman Vincent?
My concern is, is that perhaps the residents may not have much more to add than what Mr. Wiley has already had, but I don't know.
Okay. Well, we will give an opportunity to those who want to speak, to speak, so...
I mean, it doesn't preclude somebody else that has already spoken to speak again. We, we, I mean, they can, they can stand up and speak again if they deserve it.
They can speak again by leave of the council. And so if the council is amenable to that, maybe we will proceed with something from someone who is in favor of the project. If there is a desire after all has spoken, then we'll come back and give opportunities for a few more comments from both for and again.
Mayor and council, my name is Mike Winder, and I reside and office at 4400 West, 4100 South, West Valley City, Utah 4120. And it's an honor to be here today, and kind of a unique situation, having been there, up there for eight years, to be here. And it's great to see all of you and hear good things in the community of your service and the good reputation. So keep up the good work. As the mayor pointed out, Ascent Construction is technically not the applicant in this rezone, but they are the developer. And this council knows that while I was on the dais as elected official, I was very passionate about this project, about seeing it developed the right way and in a way that was a positive for West Valley City. And so I was honored when Bob Murray and Brad Nolton from Ascent Construction reached out to me and said, hey, could you help us with this project? Not just tonight, but going forward as we work to build this out and to help the city achieve its dreams. And so I'm honored to be part of that team. And like was mentioned, they're not the applicants, but they are the developer. And in fact, because they were not the applicants, they weren't informed of the study meeting last week, as would be tradition if they were the developer. Had they, excuse me, had they been the applicant, they would have been informed of the study meeting, and that's why they, they weren't there, come to find out. But being a developer, they're certainly interested in being here today.
Just a clarification there, if we could, from Mr. Isaac on that.
What the formality is saying is that the, as an applicant, they would have a duty to make sure that their, their addresses were, were correct in terms of the county. But as, because we are the applicants, we sent out notice to who we were supposed to send out, and as a result of that, unfortunately, the county did not have the correct address for you, so...
Right. So I apologize on behalf of Ascent Construction, but we're here today and we're, we're happy to discuss this. I want to just take a minute to remind us all of this. It, it took us years, literally, as a staff and as elected body, to come to the point where we did on May 14th of last year, when the latest master development plan was approved. And there's a copy of that passed out here. It was Resolution 1368, was presented in May 14th by Mr. Pyle. According to the minutes, quote, "To incorporate a new concept and site plan, the city manager advised the Jordan River Marketplace project was to be a mixed-use, walkable development with culturally diverse shops and restaurants, office space, residential units, and cultural amenities, all within a multicultural environment," close quote. In that meeting, council member Tom Hune made the motion for approval of this plan, master plan, and council member Steve Vincent seconded the motion, following which it was approved unanimously. And just a quick reminder, since we do have some new members of the councils, we have a one-minute YouTube fly-through that shows the three dimensions of this project. Mr. Mayor, are you okay if this is part of our testimony, we show that briefly?
That would be fine.
So we see it starts on the end by Cultural Center Drive, as you go past the different shops on either side. Some are two-story with office above. You come to an iconic centerpiece with the clock tower. And then as you head to the main center with jumping fountains and other activity, there's a covered carousel. There was even talk of having different animals from different countries of the world representing different things. Then you come out into the plaza where you have the, where you have the power corridor, and there would be kind of a mini Pike's Place Market, where you have tents for different vendors to come set up their wares. Then you have the Hispanic market there, the hotel you're looking at. And as you circle back, you see the Asian marketplace. So that gives you a kind of a three-dimensional feel of what the Jordan River Marketplace was envisioned back when the council unanimously approved this vision May 14th. I'd like to know if I could toss the microphone over to Bob Murray to talk about the next piece of this.
Okay, that would be fine, if you'll introduce yourself and state for the record.
Bob Murray with Jordan River Marketplace LLC. Address is 25 South Main in Centerville, 84014. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to just give you an overview of what we've accomplished since this project was preliminarily approved on May 14th. We've been very, very busy trying to pull all the pieces together. And I thought, on behalf of the new council members and for you also, Mr. Mayor, it might be good to just give you an overview of all the things that we've been working on, so that you can see that we haven't been sitting on our laurels with this. We've had multiple meetings with, with Granger Hunter Improvement District on all the utility issues. The civil drawings are all completed, the sewer, the water, the drainage, all of that will be submitted next week when the elevations are completed. We have been working with not only Granger Hunter on that, but also Benchmark Engineering. We are working with Naylor Wentworth Lund on all of the elevations. They're working feverishly to get all those buildings, the elevations of all those buildings in that development put together, so that the, the civil drawings can be submitted next week to, to the city. We are reviewing the lease agreement with Rocky Mountain Power in order to lease the Rocky Mountain, the power corridor. We also have been working with West Valley City on the storm drain easement. With this new storm drain easement and line installation, West Valley City can now adopt the old pipe that runs through the development, which is a real plus. We have engaged RDL Design to do a landscape plan, which will be part of our civil drawings submitted next week. We have had multiple meetings with Mountain West Realtors, working with the potential tenants on letters of intent and also lease agreements. We commissioned HROX to conduct another traffic study, which UDOT required of us to, to put together. We've been reviewing lease agreements and LOIs with tenants that are interested in coming to this location. And I wonder if I could have Michelle come up and just give you a quick overview of the tenants that we have, pretty much locked in place, to come into, to come into this development. I don't want you to think that because we're leading with the apartments, that there isn't anything behind that, because there is a significant amount of, of the buildings that will be coming right on the heels of that project.
My name's Michelle Dome with Mountain West Retail. I'm a retail specialist for this development site. And as Bob mentioned, we've been talking to many different retailers regarding this development. Many are very excited to hear what's going on, and I'd like to kind of give you guys some updates on who we've been talking to. We have several letter of intents that are signed, in addition to a few more that are being reviewed right now. So I will kind of go over the plan, and do you want me to use this map?
Yeah, we need to speak in the background.
Okay. So on the map, we've labeled all the buildings by letters. And right here, we have Building A, B, C, D, Building E, F, and G. And currently, we've talked to a variety of different restaurants and retailers. And Building B is mixed with retailers and office. Currently, Chamber West is very interested in being a part of this development. They have been very supportive of the development, and they are interested in helping support the development, in addition to being a future tenant. And a few of the other retailers include, I'll kind of mention some of the different buildings. So Buildings C and D are pretty much, I would say, probably like 60 to 70% filled. And we're also talking to a few more. And some of their restaurants include a variety, including Italian restaurant, a Mediterranean restaurant. We wanted to kind of create a variety. We also have a European bakery that's very interested, in addition to a Japanese restaurant. So we definitely want to fit the council and the city's vision of a destination shopping center. And then, from a retail perspective, we... And then, from a retail perspective, we've talked to a lot of retailers and the public about the development. They've mentioned that they are very interested for a number of reasons. One in particular is just what they have going on at this development. Specifically, I would like to mention the apartment complex, just because it's a great addition to a development site for a number of reasons. One reason that many retailers have mentioned is it adds to the whole development. They've mentioned that it's very similar to City Creek or Farmington Station. It brings a lot of different tenants, a lot of customers to the whole site. And then, am I missing anything else?
International Marketplace.
Oh, yeah, so, sorry about that. Yeah, so we are very excited to talk about one of the major anchor tenants. And this anchor tenant is from Las Vegas. And the name of the grocery store is called International Marketplace, which is great because it's very fitting for our development. I actually just met with her last Friday, and we've been talking to her for the past year. And a little bit about International Marketplace. She caters towards a variety of different groups. So some of them include Asian foods, Hispanic foods, in addition to European. She is very interested in the development. We've been talking to her for the past year, and she's planning to do a site visit within the next two weeks, which we would like to, if possible, have the mayor be present to meet her, in addition to any council member that's interested, and anyone else that would like to join. And then, some of the things that they sell in the store is a variety of food products and different items from each country. So it gives a lot of customers an opportunity to just go there for a one-stop shop to get all of their goods. And the one thing that I noticed was very different from any grocery store, is that I arrived at the meeting probably 30 minutes early, and there were a lot of people standing outside just waiting to go to the store. So it's definitely a great addition to have at this development site. And if you guys have any questions, please let me know, and I'm more than happy to answer.
There's not one of those developments, there's not one of those stores in Utah yet, so this is very exciting to us. I think the significant investment of time and money that we've invested in this, in this project shows that we're very serious about this development. We want it to go. We always have and we will until it's completed. And so that commitment and dedication, I hope, is evidence to you that we're serious and we want to get it done.
Mike Winder again for the recording. I appreciate Bob Murray and Michelle and Tracy and their team for helping to give kind of the macro view of this entire project. It's amazing to me, as I've dug into it, that, all the work that has been going on. But tonight's ask regarding this specific item on the agenda is because this area is special and unique for the city, we want to get it right. And there's, they've been able to hear comments in the planning commission, meeting with neighbors, we've heard some, we'll hear more comments tonight, obviously, in the public hearing. And we want to hear the conversation with the council. And then what we'd respectfully ask, is we'd like to take that feedback to craft a development agreement that could go with this rezone application, that could be considered in two weeks' time on March 4th. And so we would ask that this is continued to March 4th. Give us two weeks to incorporate all that feedback and put together a development agreement that restricts this parcel to more clearly reflect what the city wants. And we would ask that, as you consider the comments tonight, and know that we'll be listening as well to your comments on how to best incorporate that feedback, and would love to put that into a development agreement, so that when this land use decision is made, that we're already well on our way towards the right path of what everyone has a shared vision of. Mr. Mayor, we'd plan for Bob Murray to pop back up again. I don't know if you want to break it up with other discussion, or if we can kind of continue with the presentation?
Wish you the counsel. Do you have more on your presentation?
Well, Mr. Murray, just like give some details about the specific apartment complex being proposed tonight.
That would be nice, since that's why we're here tonight.
Yes, but thank you for letting us indulge in the larger macro picture, because we do view that as relevant. Thank you.
Bob Murray back. We are excited to present this zone change request for your approval and support. We've worked hard on the entire development to get to this point. Slide one shows that the Jordan River Marketplace property is currently zoned C2, general commercial, with the Jordan River overlay zone. Jordan River Marketplace LLC is requesting that the parcel west of the pond, which is in slide two, also be included in the rest of the development as general commercial, including the Jordan River overlay zone. This means changing the current zone from R112, which is a single-family residential, minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, to the C2 zoning. As a developer, we desired to rezone this property, to have the entire development be in the same zone. And that's why we built that into the ADL as a submission of the rezone application, because it just made sense to us to have the entire development be one zone, C2. We never felt that, ever, that the single-family homes were the right fit for this commercial mixed-use development. And I don't believe the city felt that way either. We've always felt the residential component was important to the success of this development, and I believe the city has as well, believe that that was the case, as it was approved on May 14th with the apartment complex as part of it. This area has been master planned as part of the Jordan River overlay zone, which calls for quality mixed-use residential in a planned aesthetically pleasing setting, which will be compatible and complementary to adjacent uses. And our proposal is to meet the city's goal here. That's what we want to do. And to us, it's a no-brainer that the entire Jordan River Marketplace be zoned consistently as a C2. Now, as a developer, we need the zone change to allow for the residential use that will create the buffer between the neighborhood and this commercial development that we're planning. Our professional management company, Apartment Management Consultants, AMC, I think you're familiar with these folks, they manage over 1,450 units in West Valley City, about 5,000 in Taylorsville, and statewide, about 15,000 units. They do an excellent job. They're professionals, they will manage this complex well. And our sources tell us that there's a great need for this type of housing in West Valley City. Most successful mixed-use developments include a residential piece like this. AMC, in discussions with them, they forecast that occupancy will be very high at this location, and the rents will average around $900 a month. There's several benefits, as we see it, to having this project here at this location. As we, as we had the planning commission review the plans for this project, they confirmed with us that retail would not be a good use here, and that residential is a good use. It offers much-needed housing to those who desire to live in this great community, and it brings a tax base to the city that will help drive the success of this Jordan River Marketplace development and for the RDA. Brings rooftops to this area, and that means people to this location. These people may even work at the restaurants or some of the businesses here at this Jordan River Marketplace. We believe it does provide a buffer to the local residents from the commercial mixed-use development, which is going to be significant, including a hotel and large marketplaces, marketplace buildings. Starting with the apartment complex breathes vitality and energy into this area, and it begins that transformation that we've been longing to make happen. It will start to fulfill our agreement with the gateway to West Valley City as part of this great community. So our proposal includes a four-story apartment building. So on the next slide, you'll see the apartment elevation, 96 unit, total units. That would be 61-bedroom and 36-two-bedroom units, 153 parking stalls on three acres, beautiful pool and clubhouse. So it would be 24 units per acre, because there's 24 units, 24 units per acre. It'll have a European look, a European architecture, beautiful landscaping, superior construction, because Ascent Construction will be building it. And it'll be located just west of the pond. The next slide, you'll see the footprint, as it will be positioned right next to the pond. It'll have an overview of the Cultural Celebration Center of the mountains to the east, and the wide-open grassy area there at the Cultural Celebration Center. This is what we're proposing. We feel that this is the right thing for this location. We feel good about it, and I think it's the right thing for West Valley City, and we'd like your support.
Thank you. Now we'll go over to someone speaking in opposition. Yes, please come forward, introduce yourself.
My name is John Grant. I live at 1481 West, 3300 South. I actually rent the property, rent a small little house on that property. My grandma is actually the landowner of the, of this, of the property I live on, and she's with us here today. Big issue we have is the, our property, or my grandma's property, is located, if you look at the map right here, where this parking lot is, right near the apartment. This parking lot right here, this line of, I guess, trees right here, on the other side of that, that is where my grandma's property begins. That, you've got a small driveway, and then it's my grandma's house. So the biggest issue we see is, well, actually, there's two. First one is with the height of the actual building itself, with how close it will actually be to our, to my grandma's house. With the height, we probably wouldn't be getting morning sunlight. Normally, we get a light, maybe 7:00, 7:30 is about when we start getting the daylight. We probably won't now get it till 11:00, 11:30. Plus, it also blocks our view of the mountains. And we have really enjoyed having that view. And that's one of the first issues we have, is the height itself is just, it's just strange with the height. The second one is, we understand that it's going to be blocked off to vehicle traffic. But another issue we brought up at the past meeting was, what about, is it blocked off from people? If it's fenced off, what's to prevent kids and other tenants with kids hopping over the fence? And what's, what's there to stop them? And then what's, what's there to stop them from cutting through our neighborhood and using our street, which is a relatively small street? We already have it, it's, just wouldn't be a good idea to have foot traffic just going through our neighborhood. And that is because we have a lot of open land out there, among which are, I know my grandma plants a farm constantly. Several of our neighbors have animals and livestock in their, on their property. And we just feel that any foot traffic, or potential foot traffic, coming from the, from the apartment itself is going to harass the animals or any kid, any kids looking for a thrill or whatever, deciding to tag up a building, or tag up a house, or a garage, or just whatever. Because it happens, no matter how good a neighborhood is, there's always those one or two kids or people that need a thrill and decide to just go crazy. Then, the one final point I would like to bring up is the trash issue, essentially. It's, we've all known people who do it, we've probably seen it ourselves. But in a situation like this, where you have parking next to a fence line, people cleaning out their cars, even if it's like one soda can, one bag, instead of looking for a garbage can that's nearby, what's to, how many times have we seen just somebody throw a piece of trash over the fence and just forget about it? Just like, it's over the fence, not our problem. Well, there's somebody on the other side of the fence that has to clean it up, and we do not want to have to deal with any trash or anything like that coming over and making it harder for us to maintain our property and my grandma's property. Those are the three things that we really have the biggest issue with concerning this development, so that is why we stand in opposition to any, to this particular change. Thank you.
Thank you. Then again, in opposition, anyone else wishing to speak? Just come forward.
Hi, my name is Gail Mandamal. I live at 1486 West, 3300 South. I guess just along the lines, we're in strong opposition. I think most of us folks here are, because we live right next to there. And some of the issues that we were concerned about is that we would have liked to have seen a compromise. We met with Mr. Murray, and I appreciate, you know, the work that these folks have had put in to try to develop this area. And I'm sure that there's a lot of people, along with you folks in West Valley, that are excited about having new restaurants, new shopping centers, things like that over here, that we can enjoy. What we're opposed to is the size, the height, how large that these apartment buildings are going to be. Mr. Murray said that they will be from 711 to 765 square feet. That's the size of my mobile home. I'm sitting here thinking, could a man and a wife and their children live in that small area? Which means the apartments will be continually transient. They're going to have someone move in, they'll stay for at least six months a year, and they're gone, because they've got too many kids, it's too small of a place. How are they going to live in there? So you're going to have a lot of people in and out. Again, it will obstruct our view. We're people who are single-family dwellings, and it's been rural. We've had horses and goats and sheep and cows and all kinds of things, and now all of a sudden, it's like being in downtown New York City, that's right next door to us. So it's really not a buffer. It's not that we're so opposed to having West Valley City become better, and, you know, a lot of folks said, well, there's just weeds there. We kind of like the weeds, but we also understand there's got to be growth. But, you know, along with more people comes more crime. I worked at the penitentiary for 20 years. You put a lot of people in a very small area, you're going to have a lot of problems, which means what happens when these businesses close down at night? And you've got people here, and you've got vandalism going on in the shops and different things like that, just because of more people. So we asked for a compromise. Couldn't we have, you know, a two-story structure of homes that would be there that, that could be like for retirement or something like that? So it could be a buffer for like what Mr. Murray was talking about, but it doesn't have to be very high-density residential in that area. I think a lot of folks all over throughout, all of West Valley City are going to go to this complex, and that it shouldn't be just built with a commercial to rely on just the residents that will be living there in that small area that's there. One other concern that we had was also the fireworks. You know, a lot of folks really enjoy the fireworks over the 4th of July and 24th, and so they have those fireworks. They set off some of those fireworks, and they're going to start our fields on fire. It's happened several times, that we have to run out back there, because we still have ours there. And so we were just hoping that you would consider some of our issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak? They've covered everything?
Almost.
Representative Wiley?
Laurie Wiley again. I just want to talk about a few issues that was brought up by the past mayor and Mr. Murray. You talk about having residential, and residential, you know, we all know, is key to a lot of these businesses. But, you know, you look at the overall footprint of the cultural center, the surrounding areas, you know, we have high-density housing, very high-density. I'm not sure very high, but I know, I know we do have high-density housing, just south of 33rd South. I mean, that's, that's filled. We have high-density housing just on Lester Street, between 3100 South and 33rd South. It's residential, single-family and condo, but it's, I mean, gosh, folks, these places are like 4,000, 6,000 square foot lots. I mean, you jammed them in there. Now, we had a neighbor, Ling Wall, who came in and approached the planning commission to have the zoning changed. to have the zoning change, to change the land property from R112 to R1, I believe it was R16. We compromised to go R110 or R1N, I'm not sure which that was exactly. But, you know, open space is very important to, not just us as neighbors living in the area, but I think for everybody, the vitality of the community. And as he said, it's a gateway, that area's a gateway into West Valley City. And I'll tell you, if you drive in right now, if you look south, the first thing you see when you pass a river is high-density housing. You know, to me, and as I recall, it was a while back when we were talking about high-density housing out on the west side, about the Mountain View Quarter, I guess, proposed area and so forth. And, you know, I think I commented at that time that, you know, it's really nice to be able to drive into a city and see open space. See farm animals, see the different things that the city has to offer. I mean, right now, you drive in, what does the city have to offer? It offers a lot of apartments. And it bodes well for people who want to develop commercial property. Again, it's key. But I think the way it's done, or the way it's being proposed isn't, in our minds, a smart way of doing this. You know, we, like I say, we had a meeting with Mr. Murray and, you know, I think we, as a community, as a neighborhood, they're kind of compromised, saying, "Hey, look, cut it in half, go a two-story. You know, spread a little bit further, make the unit look bigger." But for some reason, he's stuck with 96 units. And I tell you, that's a lot of people. And not to say, as was mentioned before, that when you get families in there, and Lord knows, I think if you were to survey a lot of these apartment complexes in West Valley City, you're going to find that you have more than one family living in these units. It's just the way of life, the way things are. And there, again, I think, you know, former Wynder, Mayor Wynder, talked about, you know, "We need to do it and get it right the first time." And I think careful consideration, if you look at all sides of this issue, especially with the zoning, the current zoning. And that is a master plan, I guess it was approved back in, whatever date that was, with Wayne, May 14. And now we're coming back to say, "We want to change the master plan even again to change that one section from R112 to a C2." You know, of course, we're opposed to that. Property management, let me talk about that for a second. Because I've had 30 years in the, working for government. I understand apartments, I understand neighborhoods, I understand zoning. I want to recap an issue that I posed with the planning commission and that was the Heartland Apartments, 17 South and Reddard Road. When that went in, that was beautiful. That was a well-built, and the contractor was probably, everybody's good as Ascent. I think they did a remarkable job. It was a kind of an upper-end type apartment complex. And I seen within 10 years, 15 years, go from being a good complex, a good living situation to, I tell you, I don't think, I wouldn't go there after dark. I wouldn't get out of my car after dark unless I was escorted. I mean, it's gotten to that point. It's really unfortunate, because it doesn't take all but one or two people that start inviting their friends in and, you know, you start having problems. And I think, you know, we've got areas in the city that we have problems with, that need to be dealt with, but that's something for another day. But with regard to this space here, you know, going back to get it right, I think that's vitally important that we do get it right the first time. There again, I think it behooves us to look at the R112 and really carefully consider leaving it as R112 or even reselling to something a little more dense. But for heaven's sake, don't go high-density. I mean, that just doesn't make sense. In fact, I think there was a talk before putting in a charter school in that area. And for whatever reasons I don't know about, that was squashed and this proposal came about. But I think, you know, as a community, as a neighborhood, you know, we've been working together. I think we've really gotten close in the last probably two years with several of these issues that's come about, because we do care about our neighborhood. We do care about West Valley City. And we are part of the gateway into West Valley City. And, you know, we're doing everything we can to make it right, make it good, make a good impression. And, you know, we applaud the efforts that's gone into developing the cultural center property. I mean, it goes back when Bob Buchanan was the RDA director. I worked closely with Bob in Salt Lake City for a lot of years. And the guy had a lot of great thoughts. He had a lot of foresight to make things happen. But unfortunately, the Congress essentially, he couldn't do that. So, you know, with that, I just, I don't want to say, you know, I think the architects, Naylor Wentworth, I've worked with Naylor for a lot of years and they are good architects. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that they do a good job.
Nichols-Negler.
Nicholson?
Nichols-Negler.
Nichols-Negler, thank you. So we don't have a problem with that. But just to reiterate, I think, you know, as a community, you know, we're supportive of a lot of things. You know, we met with Mr. Murray, we want to, you know, help him succeed. But, you know, we want something returned. And all we ask is that we consider of us and believe in what we can to help you and make things right. But anyway, again, we're opposed to the rezoning of this property. Thank you.
So, did we get everyone who wanted to speak? We're still one behind, but I tried to narrow it out.
Okay, I'll speak.
One more.
My name is Deborah Sedbury. I live at 1460 West, 3300 South. I've already written, you folks, a letter. I do want to say there's been a little bit of noise made here with the lower part of the property. It's beautiful. And I think that's why he wanted to go last, was so that he could show the beauty of that. So why don't we start there? Start at the road, start at the gateway and move back. And maybe when you get back there, something lovely will happen and a magic will take place or something. And that piece of property will come into a better place than what a four-story apartment complex is going to be. I've driven around, I've looked at four-story apartments, or tried to find even four-story buildings. You don't see very many of them. Three stories are huge. And four stories just seems like a phenomenal thing over there. So just please take a look at the overall, start at the road, bring it back to us. And then let's revisit this piece of property yet another time. Thank you very much.
Mike Wynder again. Just a reminder that the multifamily, multi-story residential that you see here was part of the master development plan that was approved unanimously, May 14. And we're not here to change anything, we're here to take the next step forward in that process. In fact, that's why the city brought this forward as opposed to the developer. But in the spirit of compromise, I just want to ask, as the, in a moment, this goes to the mayor and council discussion, if a motion is made to continue this, so that we have time to put a development agreement together, I would humbly ask of you that you could help give us feedback on specifically three areas in that motion. One would be height. We've heard from the planning commission and some neighbors that four stories is too high and they'd prefer three. Some, they may even prefer two, as we heard. We've heard from some city officials that three is too low and that the city would like to have four stories. This provides more urban energy and rooftops to the project. It's financially better for the RDA, because a larger construction project produces more tax increment. And is the reason we didn't do the charter school there is because we need to have that tax increment for this RDA to really pop. Whether it's three stories or four stories, there will be two elevators in this Class A project. And Ascent is willing to do three or four, whichever you'd prefer, to keep the city happy. And while preferring to do four is open to being bound by your wishes. So, one is, if you make a motion for continuance so that we can put a development agreement, give us some direction on height, so that we can respect your wishes on that. Number two, elevations. The architectural elevations tonight shown are a modern European look that's renting very well and is very popular around the valley. And the architects that worked on that and have worked with others have been very pleased with how well that product's been received throughout the valley. But we've heard some concerns in the process, that it's not a traditional enough look and that a different look would fit in with the theme of it in the international marketplace better. If that's the will of the body, we'd love to have that feedback on the elevations, if there's any changes and specifics there. Number three is the tenant mix. Some of the feedback from the neighbors was that we keep this complex to active senior, defined as 55-plus. Others at the city have expressed a desire for this housing to not be restricted by age and be open to entrepreneurs and shop owners that may work in the international marketplace. We're happy to go either way. Realize too, this tenant mix will dictate a little bit the unit sizes that are in there, based on market conditions. And by the way, it's over 700 to over 1,000 square feet in the current proposal. But even that, we're open to the wishes of this elected body tonight. So please give us some direction on the preferred tenant mix too. So that would be our ask, is that we continue this for two weeks, give us a chance to put your wishes in writing, so there's no fears of any bait and switch in a development agreement, and specifically with some direction on height, elevations and tenant mix. Thank you again for your thoughtful consideration and for keeping, helping the next step move forward in this multi-year process for the Jordan River Marketplace.
Okay. I believe that was everyone who indicated they wanted to speak. So, then I will close the public comment portion of this discussion. We will now turn to the council for their comments and questions. To the council. Councilman Rushton.
Question of the staff here, Mr. Isaac, can you just tell us about the noticing process and everything that was done, you know, that was done by the book and we exceeded all state laws and notice requirements on this particular application?
Yes, thank you very much. Everything was done according to the, our procedures that go way back. We noticed this as a result of the city itself making the application. We would normally go to the county to get the addresses of the people living closest to the development and notify them of the public hearing. In this case, apparently, the developer, Ascent, was unaware that their address on the county official documents was incorrect. The mayor mentioned, the former mayor mentioned that if they had have been the applicant, they would have known that the county address was incorrect and they would have been able to fix that. As a result, it was not done. However, everything was done according to our, not only our policies and procedures, but also legally. It was posted correctly and this meeting was, we notified everyone that we needed to notify of this particular meeting, in accordance with the law.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Further discussion in the council? Questions? Councilman Vincent?
I'll go ahead and just make some comments about the proposed development. Over the years that we've looked at different high-density projects, I've been pretty vocal about units that will, houses at least have three-bedroom units. So that if a family chooses a lifestyle of living in an apartment, that they can. And that they don't constantly become transient, because they have to, because they have a child and there's not another bedroom. So, that would be one issue that I have, is that there are literally no three-bedroom units in this facility. In fact, I believe there ought to be a higher concentration of three-bedroom units as a standard rule. So, I've been fairly clear and vocal on that over the years, that that's where I stand on housing units. I do believe that there needs to be some sort of buffer zone between the commercial use and the single-family housing. And I, and like Mr. Wiley has suggested, there is a lot of high-density housing within, you know, one or two mile radius of this area, some in South Salt Lake, some in West Valley. So I would think that there could be some sort of compromise between this very high density and a lower density. Perhaps something similar to the senior condominium complexes that are just to the west of where most of these residents live. But I do agree that there needs to be some sort of transition. Having a majority of your units, a single bedroom is a concern to me.
Councilman Rushton.
Make a general comment, then maybe a motion to spur the debate along a little bit. But first of all, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know you have better things to do on a Tuesday, but the process is heartwarming that you were all able to get your notices and come and take pride in your neighborhood and going forward. You're all good Americans and thanks for coming out and providing us with some input. You know, it's always been the intention of this council to, going back for years, to turn this piece of property into something special, a destination spot, something that could bring in shoppers and businesses and be a real destination spot. And also, you know, just help us with our overall redevelopment and with the tax coffers. And that's really always been the goal, was the Jordan River Marketplace. And I think it was really evident tonight that, by the discussions, especially those that, those working on the marketplace, that the marketplace is key, central, it is the focus. And so, you know, I'm kind of Yogi Berra over here to where it's deja vu all over again, to where we're talking about this property that's west of the pond. To where it's always, I think, the intent of the council, that the marketplace was first and that this property, we've been told, is problematic, that it's further sunken in, that it's not marketable, that it's not visible, that, you know, any number of problems. But yet, you know, we're continued to be stuck on this property west, in my mind, to the detriment of the marketplace in general. And I think that's been affirmed. Somebody mentioned, you know, other projects that have come in here that seem like we're always hung up on this western spot. But, you know, I agree with what was said by Mr. Wiley. Tori said, you know, "All we want is, you know, harmony with existing properties." And I think that's all we want too, is we want to have the marketplace and the residents and whatever this western pond piece is, be something that can augment both the development and the neighborhood. And, you know, this could be it. This could be a major disaster of epic proportions in melding the two. But I think we don't know until, you know, because this is always first and that we're not focused on the marketplace and we're essentially putting the cart before the horse on this. And so, I would like to move, and I'll make the motion, that we postpone this matter indefinitely, until the council is, you know, ready to reconsider this. With, you know, some direction was asked for tonight, but I would say that the direction is, is to focus on the marketplace. And then I think that this piece comes at, you know, some certain point or when there's some comfort that we do this. So to make it more official, I guess it's with the first item, which would be I move to continue indefinitely ordinance 1414 to amend the general plan until the council's ready to place it back on the agenda.
Thank you. The motion is before us. Councilman Beal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make some comments to that motion.
We don't have the motion properly before us.
I mean, but second the motion, that makes some comments.
Okay, thank you. Now the motion is properly before us.
Because I do agree with the motion. I agree with what Mr. Vincent said. We've not approved the last several opposed apartment buildings that we've seen. I do not want to see a lot of small one- and two-bedroom apartments, but we have, I believe, in our housing stock throughout the city enough of that kind of unit. And I agree with what Mr. Rushton said, that, you know, this is the Jordan River Marketplace. When I was, I'm in my fifth year on the council now and this marketplace predated my becoming a member of the council. And I have noticed the Ascent signs along 33rd South as it transitions into 35th South and known that something's going to be built there for a long time. And I've been excited to see what's going to be built there and looked at various iterations of plans of what could be built there. But we still don't have anything built there. And again, I think, let's focus on the marketplace and then see as it develops towards the west, what would be a good fit along that pond, the hotel, the apartments, residential, something else. Certainly, you don't want some major retail establishment right next to your properties either. And I recognize that it'd be nice to keep it vacant forever. I know, that might be nice. I don't think it's really reasonable, when you live in a large city, which West Valley is, it's not Manhattan, but it is the second-largest city in this state, that vacant land is always going to stay vacant. But we would like to have a nice fit. And I would not like to see this piece of property developed and still never realize a marketplace. And so with those comments, I seconded the motion of Mr. And so with those comments, I seconded the motion of Mr. Rushton.
Thank you. The motion is before us. Discussion, further discussion? Perhaps I will make a few comments. Being new on the council, of course, and not here when these decisions are made, although I have a high regard for what people who are still on the council have done, and who did before and are not now here, I feel no particular compulsion to be bound by what they did, unless it is contractually required. I feel I represent the people in my own way. You will note that a motion is before us. I am not sure that there will be any discussion or any action to give direction to the developer about number of units, about the size of units, and so forth, and that may not necessarily be appropriate at this time. I would say, and I go back to the reason for our being here, we are being faced with an apartment complex, as I refer to it, and we have had some significant opposition from nearby neighbors. That is an issue. We want to try and make sure that where possible, we find a good solution between the owner of a property who wants to develop that, and those of the residents around. Although they don't own the property, and cannot dictate to that individual what they put there, certainly we try to take that into account as we look at what is happening in the city. I, for one, can't give feedback right at this moment about what I think should be changed in these apartments, to make them better meet the needs, although we've gotten some ideas. That may be sufficient, it may not, but because of that, I think I will support the motion, because I'm not sure in two weeks that I would be ready and be able to give feedback that would actually lead you to a solution. It's one thing to say, we're not quite there, it's another to say, here's what's wrong with it, A, B, and C, fix these. And although we've had some suggestions about that, personally, I would like a little more time to just dig into that, and so I'll support the motion. Any further discussion from the council? If not, we'll go back to maker of the motion. Any final comments?
No, thank you.
With that then, we'll place the motion before the council. All in favor of the motion to continue without a fixed date of when this will come back, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. With that then, I guess I should have clarified your motion, we were, the action we were taking was on both items. That needs to be very clear, and in fact, if that wasn't clear to the council, maybe we should, was it on the first?
Yeah, I made the motion on, to definitely postpone ordinance 1414.
Okay.
Which amends the general. Amends the general plan. And I.
We would have to replace the motion for both, so I thought we're okay. It was just the one.
I will, if I recognize that since we did not amend the general plan, it would probably not be appropriate to amend the zoning on this also, so I would also move that we postpone indefinitely ordinance 1415.
Motion is before us, do we have a second?
Second, the motion.
We have a second. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll go back. Any final comments? Maker of the motion, seeing none. All in favor of the motion to also postpone without definite date of return, or indefinitely, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to those of you who've come here to participate in this. The other thing we will need to do is, when this is reinstated or discussed again, we'll make sure that, again, proper notification gets out to those interested.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we're not trying to slip this by in any way. We'll come back, people will be made aware, and an opportunity given for people to participate again on both sides of this. With that then, we'll go on to item number eight on our agenda. We have before us a resolution, 14-26, to approve 80 licenses of Dragon Naturally Speaking software for our police department, for their cars. Is there anything that you want to add on that, Mr. Isaac?
Yes, sir, just to say that the amazing technology exists, and this will allow and streamline our police's officers' ability to do their incident reports by simply just verbally talking into this particular software, and the software will allow that, that's all to be dictated, they can dictate it, and the translation will be completed. By the way, sir, I'd just mention one of the things, sir, if I could, it is all being paid out of forfeiture, asset forfeiture funds.
That is correct, then. That's all then, back to the council. This again is an item that you've had before you, appropriate use of asset forfeiture funds, and certainly will be a benefit to our officers to make their time more productive. We don't use Dragon Naturally Speaking here, but ours don't go in forums, so we don't need to. But theirs is very detailed, and a lot of legal requirements, so I've heard a lot of good things about the software, and so if it works, that's great. Then, further action by council?
Mr. Isaac, I'd make a motion to approve resolution 14-26, I'm in my glasses tonight. And I would just like to add to that, that it's not going to be just beneficial for the officers, but for our citizens, to be able to get access to those reports sooner than they can going through the, someone transcribing them.
Thank you. Councilman Lang has made a motion that we approve the purchase. Do we have a second? Second? We have a second, then. Councilman Northen? Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, we'll place it. Let's see, Councilman Lang, any final comments? Okay, then. We'll place it for a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the purchase of the 80 licenses of Dragon Naturally Speaking? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. I believe there is no need for an executive session tonight, so we will skip that and go to the final item on our agenda. And I'm still going to do it. If, we need a final motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.